I'll call the meeting, the public session, the meeting to order at seven o'clock. There are agendas down here for the meeting if you're seeking one. And if we could start with the pledge of allegiance, please. And Dr. Jim, would you lead us in the pledge? Oh, Dr. Beth, would you lead us in the pledge, apologies?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Excuse me on that. So first, we have agenda review. Dr. Eric Kelly, do you have anything to add to the agenda?
No.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the acceptance of minutes. So the first set of minutes we have is July 9th, 2024, school board meeting that was held in Brookfield. Moved by Charlene, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Jim, is there any discussion or edits? Hearing none, Kathy, if you could call the roll when you're ready.
Tom?
Aye.
Dr. Jim?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Charlene?
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yeah.
Aye. Our next set of meeting minutes are for July 16th, 2024, the NH, uh, New Hampshire School Boards Association Training Workshop for Board Members held at the Plex in the high school. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Moved by Dr. Beth, seconded by Tom Bickford. Is there any discussion or edits? Hearing none, if you could call the roll, Kathy, once you're ready.
Tom? Aye.
Aye.
Ed Stone? Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Epstein?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
Dana?
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 Aye. Next, we have the Buildings and Maintenance Committee meeting minutes of July 29th, 2024, at the SAU office. Is there a motion from someone on the Buildings and Maintenance Committee to approve those meeting minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Guy, is there a second? Seconded by Jim Pittman, is there any discussion from members of the Buildings and Maintenance For those wondering, those in attendance were Tom Bickford, Dr. Jim Manning, Guy Pike, and Jim Pittman. Okay. Motion by Guy Pike, seconded by Jim Pittman. Kathy, if you could call the roll once you're ready.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Oh, yeah, that is it, thank you, sorry. Those meeting minutes are, those committee meeting minutes are approved. Next, we have the Academic Affairs Committee meeting minutes of August 13th at the SAU office. Those in attendance were Tom Bickford, Dr. Beth Sheckler, Mary Scheriff, and Charlene Sable, or Cybil, sorry, I'm sorry, Charlene. If we could have a motion to approve those minutes from someone on the committee in a second? Moved by Dr. Beth, seconded by, um, by Mary Scheriff. Is there any discussion or edits? Hearing none, if you could call, oh, was there, no, no edits. Could you call the roll when you, please, Kathy?
Tom?
Aye.
Kathy?
Yes.
Hi.
Awesome, thank you, Kathy. And tonight's manifest approval, the manifest is in the total amount of $12,711,252.32. Could I seek a motion for someone to approve the manifest in that amount? Moved by Dana, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim Pittman, is there any discussion? Hearing none, Kathy, if you could call the roll once you're ready.
Tom? Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Dr. Beth?
Yes.
Dana?
Yeah.
Dana?
Yeah.
Aye. Next, we have public input for a total of 15 minutes. We allot three minutes per individual unless extended by the board, the total time or the amount per individual. We ask everyone be respectful, direct their comments to the board or to the superintendent, and, um, and no cross chatter. Is there any public input? Going once, going twice. Hearing no public input, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much.
You might have to turn on the top, I'll turn off mine, too.
Oh, it's on, thank you. Just need a little bit closer. First item is the district update. So I have an update regarding the ESER III funds. These funds eclipse on September 30th. Very happy to report that the 20% required to be allocated for learning loss, um, this year, 97 students were able to attend camp fully reimbursed by the district. We covered 56 sessions of Bear Camp for students. All of our camp invention sessions were full thanks to this ESER III fund, funding. We also held extensive professional development opportunities this summer, made possible by ESER III. Nearly 200 of our staff members participated in dozens of sessions in person and online in many critical topics, including math and reading, trauma-informed practices, leadership, and safety. So we're very thrilled about that. And then also, the 80% of the ESER III is allocated for the HVAC project at Crescent Lake Carpenter and Osiphe. This is on time, this, this, this project is on schedule, and Crescent Lake is complete, Carpenter is complete, and Osiphe is almost complete. So we're very encouraged and happy about that. I won't read everything in the report, however, the strategic plan is, progress is underway. Our next step is to publish a, um, a public-facing dashboard on the website of all the focus areas so the community can see the progress of all the four focus areas, academic achievement, student wellness, cultural belonging and family, and community, communication, and engagement. So we will announce when that, when that goes live.
Does anyone have any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the district communication update.
Thank you. Good segue into communication. We are, um, we've, we've just, um, started with a new communication platform for parents called Parent Square. So Parent Square is, um, is a consistent communication platform for families to communicate with teachers, administrators, coaches, um, it's, uh, including all of our important information, updates, and resources. So we're very pleased about that, and we've already had, um, a lot of very good feedback. Also in communication, we will be sending out a survey, uh, to all families on October 1st, so we can learn more about how families would like us to communicate and to engage with them. And also, we'll be, um, creating a parent advisory group. So coming soon, I'll send out an invitation for any and all parents to be part of that group, and that group will help us create a communication plan. We'll use the results from the survey, and we will create a plan going forward so we can, you know, have events and communication that, that parents are telling us best works for them. So that's, that's in the upcoming weeks.
Is there any question about the district communication update? Yes, Jim Pittman. Oh, that hurt a little bit.
Okay. Hear me now. Yeah, well, it's all or nothing, apparently, all right. Okay, thank you, Scott. Just quick question, do you have sort of a estimated timeframe when this may go live? The Parent Square?
On live.
Oh, it is?
Parent Square has already gone live.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Um, we got emails, Jim, so board members can also use it.
Okay.
So you can log in and there's an app. I found it very intuitive, very easy to use, and very accessible, so.
Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the introduction of our new student representative to the board.
Thank you, I'm very pleased to introduce Jack Larson, who is our new student rep for this school year. And I'll turn it over to Jack to say a few words.
From the top, just a switch, kind of pull it towards you.
All right, good. All right, thank you. So, good evening, folks, my name is Jack. My name is Jack Larson, I am a senior here at Kingswood Regional High School. This is my third year as a member of student council. Last two I spent as our class treasurer, and this year I'm excited to take on my new role as the school board representative for the class of 2025. A little bit about myself, I'm a varsity athlete, play for the school's baseball and golf teams. I'm also a member of the National Honor Society and the school's suicide prevention club. For an update on the school and recent athletic news, on Thursday, the girls volleyball team swept Kennett in three straight sets. Last Friday, the boys football team rolled in the hollows purple line and ran away with a 40-to-nothing win to open the season, a very promising start for the boys football team that struggled in the past years. The boys soccer team pulled through with a 5-3 victory over Merrimack Valley. Their next game will be tomorrow night at home against Milford. The girls soccer team finished their contest with a 1-1 tie against Pembroke, and the girls field hockey team came up just short, losing to Plymouth 1-0. The varsity golf team opened their season last week in two home matches, finishing in second place on Tuesday and third place on Thursday. They have a match upcoming, uh, this upcoming week, on Thursday, at Wentworth Golf Club in Jackson Township. Cross-country team looks to be in great shape, sporting a full girls roster after not having one last year, and they have a boys roster full of a lot of returning runners. They have an upcoming race on Monday, the 16th. The Kingswood Theater Department's fall musical production will be Mary Poppins. Rehearsals started today. As for other clubs and organizations at Kingswood, they'll be recruiting new members and begin the season. The high school instituted a new daily schedule this year aimed at reducing tardiness by creating longer passing times. The impact is seen in shortened task time, which is now 30 minutes instead of 45, and just three lunchways instead of four like it has been in the years past. From my observation, students seem to be adjusting to the changes just fine. Another big change in the school was actually within student council. Mr. Myers had been running student council for a very long time, but this year he has stepped down. And stepping up in his place are Ms. Holmes and Ms. Fangulari. Ms. Holmes is Spanish teacher at the school, and Ms. Fangulari, who is the wife of the principal, she is also an English teacher at the school. And they're doing a great job in the first week already. We've had meetings on planning for events like homecoming, pep rally, and even prom, and we've also come up with new fundraising ideas for the football games. Along with that, the student council members are working with their respective classmates to plan for the hallway decorating, which will take place in early October. A couple more important dates in September for students are Picture Day this Thursday at 12, and Open House, which is on the 26th. I am excited to serve with you all this year and look forward to upcoming meetings. Thank you for the opportunity to share this with you guys.
Thank you, Jack, it's great to meet you. I was also a student member on the board, so it's great to meet a fellow. Yeah, claps, I agree. Next on our agenda is an action item, the new Durham playground. You'll see in our packets that the superintendent has written us a memo on the proposal for a new playground in New Durham School.
Thank you, and thank you, Jack, excellent first report. Yes, so the new Durham playground, um, action item, I'm very pleased to inform you that the new Durham School PTO, under the leadership of PTO President Katie Hills, has successfully raised the necessary funds to begin construction on the new playground at New Durham School. So as we did with the Carpenter School project, I'm requesting that the board vote to approve the commencement of, of, uh, construction and the design of the playground structure. I've provided the picture. Additionally, we will ask the board to formally accept this generous donation from the PTO at the October meeting, after which Primex, our liability carrier, will conduct a safety inspection to ensure the playground is safe for student use. Your approval and support are crucial in advancing this much anticipated project for our students and community. So I have included a proposed motion.
Here we go, all right. You'll see, um, the proposed motion is to, to move to allow the new Durham School PTO to begin construction of a new playground as presented. So if someone would make the motion? Moved by Dr. Beth, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Guy Pike, is there any discussion? Any questions? Okay, hearing none, Kathy, once you're ready, could you please call the roll?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye. Excellent. Um, next is the Magic Moments Playground. We had a public hearing on this at our Brookfield meeting back on July 9th, was it? And, um, so that is now, the, the construction is complete, so we'll be having a vote to accept the donation. I'll let the superintendent provide more information.
That's right. As discussed at the July meeting, it's now complete and ready to be officially accepted as a donation to the board. So only a few final touches remain before it is entirely finished. So I kindly request that you vote to accept the generous gift.
Yep, so, um, you'll see there's a proposed motion in our meeting packet, so if someone would like to make the motion?
I made a motion for, for, uh, 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 for, uh,[1125.57]
Administration and our community.
Testing, yeah, good. Those of you who are not aware of it, because I just found out about this a while a week ago, a dear friend of our district passed away in August. Jack Robertson was the superintendent of schools here for many years. Jack, the building that you're sitting in was basically done through his emphasis on getting it done. Jimmy doesn't really want anything done, they want to keep it very low key, which is typical of Jack's style of doing business. As such, I'd like to take a moment of silence for Jack. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Jim. Next on our agenda is the New Hampshire School Boards Association delegation, the delegate assembly. If you saw, an email went out today that registration is up. So if you would like to attend the delegate assembly, please make sure to check your emails and to register. And as we voted on at our last meeting, July 9th in Brookfield, Mary Shilriff is our designated person to be our representative to the NHSBA, sorry, yeah, NHSBA, New Hampshire School Boards Association annual meeting. So, thank you, Mary, for volunteering to do that. And I would encourage any other boards, board members who are available to attend. It's a very fulfilling time and it can help you learn more about how the NHSBA supports us, school districts, and public education in the state of New Hampshire. With that, I'll move on to community relations. We have a proposal by Dr. Jim Manning to further our efforts as a board to improve community relations and communication in concert and cohort with our administration and our district. And I'll let Dr. Jim speak to his proposal.
Several years ago, there was a community relations committee. It was disbanded for reasons I don't really understand because I was in the hospital at the time. That said, the board really needs to bring this back. Because without it, we can't really respond. A lot of times, people don't know where to talk to, who to ask. And I'd be glad to chair a committee that allowed people to do that.
So what Dr. Jim and I had discussed and what he would like to ask a board, and what I agree with him, is to amend our policy BDE that establishes committees and to add a community relations committee. But first, before bringing that as a proposal, to ask a group of school board members, not a quorum, but you know, about three board members, to explore how to best go about this and what such a committee would do. So, we're basically asking, I guess the motion would be to, motion would be to establish an ad hoc committee of school board members to explore a community relations committee as part of policy BDE. Okay. Is there any, well, could we, would someone be willing to make that motion? Tom Bigford made the motion, seconded by Dr. Beth. Is there any discussion? You look like you have something to say, Dr. Beth, go right ahead.
Are you soliciting volunteers? Like, is there a plan to select?
You both just volunteered, Dr. Jim volunteered. If that's okay, if that's okay with the other board members, that those three board members be the ones who serve on such an ad hoc committee? Is that okay? Yes? You gotta pull it towards, yeah. You got it.
Just for clarification, this is to create an ad hoc committee to study whether it would be beneficial to add a community relations committee to our list of standing committees.
Correct. And they would provide a recommendation to academic affairs. You know, whether it takes them a month or two to study this, but they would eventually, you know, they would go to academic affairs and say, "This is our recommendation." And then academic affairs would add it to the policy and we would discuss it as part of our regular policy review. Just so people understand, so the ad hoc committee would be studying the idea and eventually go to the academic affairs committee, which is where we amend and update all of our policies or reaffirm policies. Is there any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, Kathy, if you would call the roll once you're ready.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. That concludes my chairperson's report, chairman's report. Committee reports. First, I'll recognize Charlene as the leader of academic affairs committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So everyone received a copy of a memo from the superintendent talking about the need to, for us to decide to pass a waiver of policy BG in order to bypass second reads so that we can immediately approve the policies listed in your agenda. These are basically, it's my understanding, and Heather, please correct me if I'm wrong, it's my understanding, these are basically boilerplate policies required of every school board. And we have been advised by Will Phillips, New Hampshire School Boards Association attorney, to vote to waive the portion of policy BG requiring a second read and then to move for emergency approval. And that's basically it in a nutshell.
Could you go a little bit in depth why we need to update the policies immediately? It's because the law went into effect, Charlene, we're mandated to have these policies, just so people know.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's, okay, I should have said a little more about what I meant by boilerplate, but yes, these are required by law.
So you'll see in the meeting packet, and it doesn't have to be exactly word like this, but there's a proposed motion to move to waive the second meeting limitation in order to take immediate action to adopt a new policy or revise an existing policy as allowed in school board policy BG, board policy process. So would anyone be willing to make that motion? Move by Dr. Beth, seconded by Dr. Jim. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Dr. Beth.
Hello? Okay. I just wanted to note too that at academic affairs, we discussed that if we did emergency approve them tonight, that we could review those policies once again in our November back. Is that right, Charlene? Okay, right, so it's not a, it's not a closing of the door, it's a putting the policy in place so that we're compliant under the law with an opportunity to come back and review them in a more timely way as a board.
Excellent. Is there any other discussion, questions? Okay. Yes, there was. Second was Dr. Jim. So motion by Dr. Beth, seconded by Dr. Jim. With no other discussion or questions, Kathy, could you please call the roll?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Next, so the motion for emergency approval of the policies AC, ACA, and ACAC. Charlene, do you want to do these as a bulk vote, one vote or three separate votes?
If no one has any objection, I'd just as soon do it as a bulk vote.
Does anybody object to a bulk vote on the three policies as recommended by the NHSBA and our academic affairs committee? Hearing none, then I would ask, I'd ask Charlene for you to make a motion to adopt policies AC, ACA, ACAC as presented by the academic affairs committee.
I move for emergency approval of school board policies AC, non-discrimination slash equal opportunity, ACA USDA non-discrimination statement, and ACAD Title IX non-discrimination policy and notice of non-discrimination.
Okay, the last one is, there was a misspelling in that, it's ACAC, not ACAD. Same difference. Motion by Charlene, seconded by Dr. Jim. Is there any discussion about these policies? Yes. Jim Pittman.
Not working. All right, let's see if that works. Yeah, this is just really minor in ACAC, and the very last page at the bottom, I just think it's maybe a typo where it says, "Refer to board policy ACAC," which would be referring to itself. I'm assuming the intention was to be ACA.
What page, what page is that again?
That is, yeah, the one of one for ACAC at the bottom. Report information, et cetera, refer to board policy ACAC, which would be referring to itself. So I think it was meant to say ACA. Last line of the last policy.
Okay. Well, is everyone okay with that, making that correction?
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, Kathy, if you could call the roll?
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. I think that's it for academic affairs, Charlene. Thank you. Next is Buildings and Maintenance, Jim Pittman, you're the chair of that committee. Do you have any updates for us?
Okay, thank you very much. Just a couple things to report. Pretty much, my thunder was stolen when they said that all the ESR work on the buildings is complete or almost complete, so very happy about that. I will mention at the last Building Maintenance meeting, we had a report on water testing from Second Wind, which is a company that's performing that in all of the schools. And we were happy to find that we have only a few limited areas where we are not in compliance with the state standard. And those are owed to old plumbing fixtures and so on that have been locked out or, you know, tagged. And they will be, they will be replaced. I'll note that the New Hampshire requirement for lead levels is significantly higher than the national levels. And we are compliant in essentially every area except for those few fixtures. The next meeting of the school, of the Building and Maintenance Committee scheduled for September 24th, it'll be at 2:00 at the SAU office. That concludes my report.
Awesome, thank you, thank you, Jim Pittman. Oh, Charlene, do you have a question for Jim Pittman?
Yes, I do. Jim, over a year ago, at a Building and Maintenance Committee meeting, I requested that the district hire an independent third-party company to test our artificial turf for various toxins that literature has stated usually occur in such fields. And to my knowledge, and Kathy O'Blinnis, please correct me if I'm wrong, to my knowledge, that testing and the subsequent report has never been provided. I've never received it. So at this point, at this point in time, I would like to formally request that if there are no objections from other board members, that the Building and Maintenance Committee and Kathy O'Blinnis contacted independent third-party to do a comprehensive test of our artificial turf field for the realm of toxins that are normally associated with such fields.
Charlene, are you making a motion?
No, I'm asking a committee, the committee leader, if he would be, if, I'm formally requesting a study that I asked for over a year ago, and it hasn't been done. Are you saying I need to make a motion?
One board member can instruct any committees by themselves.
I'm not instructing, I'm requesting.
I mean, you can, okay, you can request.
Well, I mean, I requested it over a year ago and it didn't happen, so I'm just following up to find out if, if that request could be honored. But if you want me to make a motion, I suppose I could do that, if that's the only way to have this happen. I think there's enough concern in the community that it would be nice to know if there are any, you know, specific toxins present in the field on which our students are playing.
Maybe it might be judicious to attend their next meeting and ask to be put on the agenda to discuss it and to see what kind of findings they have.
Well, I appreciate that suggestion. However, I was on the agenda at the meeting over a year ago when I presented various studies and asked for this. So I don't particularly feel that doing that, because it wasn't effective when I did it before, it seems to me that it might not be effective if I do that again. And that's why I'm publicly requesting a study.
I understand, I think the committee came, when I, before I was chair, when I was on that committee, we came to a different conclusion than what you were going to.
I think the conclusion is, if I'm correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, I think the conclusion was that the science was inconclusive. And I'm not sure that, I'm not sure that that is necessarily equal to what I was asking. What I was asking was for an independent third-party to actually not make assumptions based on scientific studies, but to actually physically test our turf field.
I'll let Jim Pittman, you have something to say? He chaired the committee now for two, three years, so he probably has some insights.
Thank you. Charlene, I think, have we had some recent conversations that may be a little different, that are more targeting PFAS in particular? I know that I, somebody sent me some communication recently questioning PFAS specifically. Were you involved in that?
I know that I was in the email chain where a member of the community, who I believe is present here tonight, contacted the town of Wolfboro as well as, you know, school board and, or at least me as the Wolfboro representative. And I think it was closely tied to PFAS, but at the same time, according to the various studies I've read, PFAS is not the only toxin that's found in turf. So that's why I'm publicly asking for a comprehensive toxin panel to be, to be done by an independent third-party company that specializes in that.
Okay. And as you know, this has been a topic of conversation, as you said, for a good year now. And I know activities have happened. And I might ask Kathy O'Blinnis to weigh in if there are any, any new activities that maybe I don't know about. Okay, I see you shaking your head. Okay. In, in my recollection, we did take action in terms of trying to find out information. Phil Cousteau, I know, took some action. And we found that we had very little legitimate information coming back and very few resources to guide us at that time. I don't have any objections, though, to continuing that. And personally, as a committee leader, I would not mind you making a motion to direct us in that direction, to gather more information, I think it's very important.
Charlene, would you like to make a motion then to, for the board to direct the Buildings and Maintenance Committee to further study the, the potential, the potential impacts of the turf field on the environment and health?
I'd be happy to make that motion. I move that the Building and Maintenance Committee instruct the SAU to hire an independent third-party company specializing in testing of turf, artificial turf fields for toxins, to provide the SAU with a comprehensive report of what specific toxins are currently in our artificial turf field at Kingswood Regional High School.
Seconded by Tom Bigford. Kathy, did you get that motion? Okay. All right. So you, you want to instruct the SAU office to engage a contractor to provide us a study on the turf field?
It's my understanding that the Building and Maintenance Committee does not have the authority to do that. And so therefore, I'm requesting, well, I don't, I don't even have to go through Building and Maintenance, but I thought that, you know, I would certainly, out of respect for Dr. Jim, I mean, Jim Pittman, you know, to ask his committee to do that. But essentially, I believe that the entity that has the power to hire a company to do such would be handled by the SAU. And I'm not sure specifically which person, I'm guessing Kathy O'Blinnis. But, you know, the intent of my motion is to instruct the hiring of a third-party, independent third-party company specializing in testing turf fields for toxins to provide a report to the GW RSD showing specifically what toxins are present in our artificial turf field, if that clarification helps.
Do we have money in our, for what line would we go from?
We have no idea how much this will cost or what companies out there, third-party independent companies are out there. So we'll have to start there.
Is there any way you could say that to the mic, just because they're recording?
We have no idea if there are third, independent third-party companies out there. We'll have to look into that to find out who they are and then find out the cost. And of course, we'll keep the board updated.
Okay.
So it's doable?
I don't know, that's what I'm saying, I don't know of any, I'll have to start looking into it and researching it.
I would be happy to help with that.
If you have the name of anyone, please forward that along.
What I will do, what I will do is Google companies that do that kind of work.
Okay.
And I will come up with a list. And I will then email that list after I do a Google search.
Thank you.
I'm wondering what the exact, I mean, so your motion is just, I mean, if we approve this motion, Charlene, is your intent that they have to do the study either way, it doesn't matter? Cost impact, doesn't matter? If we go back to Phil Cousteau and ask him if he's found additional information, it doesn't matter? If the Buildings and Maintenance Committee comes to a different conclusion, or has come to previous conclusions, this is the board instructing the administration to do a study on the turf field, no matter what, doesn't matter the cost?
I think that, given the fact that we are, we are liable for the safety of all of our students and given the fact that I do not believe the Building and Maintenance Committee or the rest of this board can make an informed decision about what is best for our students without the information of what toxins are present. And once we know what toxins are present, then we would be, I believe, we would be morally and legally obligated to engage in some sort of mitigation. And so, I, I think it's really hard to put a dollar figure on a child's life. And so, because I highly doubt that we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, I highly doubt it would be that expensive. But at the same time, as I said, I feel very strongly that we have a moral and legal obligation to do the best we can for, to keep our students safe. And so that's why I'm asking, and I've made the motion, for the Building and Maintenance Committee acting in tandem with the SAU. I just want to have, I want to have a study done, and I think it's a reasonable request, where the turf is sampled in various locations, as all good companies who do testing know to do. And then, you know, whether they use, I can't remember the exact method, mass spectrometry or whatever, to identify the toxins which we know are there. I think that we should have that information before we can move forward with how we want to pursue the ultimate replacement of our existing field.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Yes, Jim Pittman?
I, I think, speaking for myself, but hopefully representing the committee, we're certainly not resistant to this at all. You know, this, this came up and received a lot of attention, as I said, over the last year. And we were a bit stymied by lack of information and not lack of will. I think a vote by this board would be important to demonstrate that we have the interest of safety for our students and our community. I also note that at this time, where it should be coming up on the time when we have to decide to replace the turf field, I think our fund, we're probably at around the $600,000 that's going to be required to do it. So it's timely to make these tests, make the decisions at this point because we certainly don't want to spend that money and then find that we need to spend it again for an alternative approach. So it certainly has a fiscal impact to do this, and I'm in support of exploring it. And as Kathy says, we don't know who does it or how much they charge. It could be reasonable, it could be a very expensive undertaking, but we won't know till we ask. So I would encourage us to, as a board, support this. And the committee will also be in support of it, although I'm speaking just for myself, not for all the other members.
Is there any other discussion or comments? I'll just say, I think the Buildings and Maintenance Committee was as informed as it could be with the information that was provided, and that could be found. So I think the Buildings and Maintenance Committee was informed. I think every board member here cares about the health and the well-being of every child in this district. So, I mean, I support the motion, I just, I hope we're not, I hope we're not accusing that any board members don't care about the health and safety of our, of our students or our student athletes. I think we all serve in this position because we're passionate about ensuring we have, you know, the best public education system we can build in this community, support students and families. So, you know, I'm supportive of us moving forward and exploring this. I just hope we do it in a collaborative way, in an approaching concert with our administration and other stakeholders. Mary, you have something to say?
Yes, I do. I did a little exploring, Googling myself as well, concerned about the toxicity of the iron particulates. I asked some folks who are coaches and use fields such as that. And I was, it was interesting because I discovered that the heat generated by this material is a concern as well. And I don't ever want to make the assumption that our coaches and staff aren't taking that into consideration. It also seems to have an impact, no pun intended, on ankles and that kind of thing. And all of these studies were like, yeah, it does, but additioning, expected to that particular event, on that particular field, even the proper shoes. And again, I'm out of my league, unintended again, when it comes to the kind of equipment that is required on different services, what's that? Yeah, sorry.
You're hitting the park.
And I'll end with that. I also support any kind of exploration. I know it met a need at the time and the world changes. And I know that the industry is responding to this. Welcome explorers.
Okay. Yes, Dr. Beth. If we're all in agreement, though, you know, I want to make sure we move on because we're at the end of our meeting agenda.
Just really, just really quick, I, I'm also in support of more data. I'm always in support of more data. And I think that finding, you know, even if the SAU were to find a few competitive bids, if there was more than one company, we could be fiscally responsible about how we do the testing as well.
Okay, excellent. Is there any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. Kathy, if you could call the roll, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Aye. Yes.
Yes.
Last is Jim Manning, Dr. Manning, Human Resources.
I have to, I have to report as that we're meeting, and there's a negotiation going forward. I have more to report probably in November. Thank you.
And last is closing activities, advanced planning. On September 11th at six o'clock is the Kingswood Regional Middle School Open House. On September 19th, at different times throughout the district, Carpenter School, Crescent Lake School, Effingham Elementary School, Ospey Central School, and Tufton Borough Central School have their open houses, so go to those schools' websites or to the SAU website to figure out the exact times for each school's open house. On September 25th, at 5:30 PM is the New Durham School Open House. On September 26th, at six o'clock is the Kingswood Regional High School and Lakes Region Tech Center Open House. And October 7th is our next school board meeting, non-public session starts at 6:00 PM, public session starts at 7:00 PM at Effingham Elementary School. Tomorrow is the New Hampshire State Primary, so go vote, it's important, make your voice heard, and if you want to see any other updates to any of these dates, because they are subject to change, please see GWRSD.org backslash calendar for the most current event details and, and if any additional events are added. And with that, we will enter into our last public input, 15 minutes, three minutes per individual, unless the board votes to extend the public input period. I ask everyone to be respectful, be polite, no cross-talk across the crowd, please direct your comments to the board and to the superintendent.
Hi, Bobby Bedman, Wolfboro. I just want to say thank you very much for the vote you just took to take the field seriously and the potential toxins in the field. I know that during the deliberative session, when I was trying to get people to pay a little bit more attention to the fact that we're potentially putting in a new astroturf field and continuing these potential toxins, that we got a very different vote than this evening. So I thank you very much for this, especially in light of the fact that Governor Sununu did sign the PFAS bill just a few weeks ago, so I'm not even sure if our field, our new field going in is going to be legal, so just keep that in mind. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Christina Swanberry, I'm a Wolfboro, New Hampshire resident. We've seen increased cases of Eastern Equine Encephalitis, a triple E mosquito-borne illness affects some of our communities in the southern half of our state. Fortunately, we haven't seen high rises in the Carroll County area, but does the district have a plan for mitigation, should this be a threat in the future?
Does anyone have an answer to that?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm wondering, is there any way you could email that question to the superintendent so then she can follow up with you in a more comprehensive way? Hasn't been something, at least that I've considered, because it's on the southern part of the state, but I think you can come down after the meeting and provide your email.
I'd be happy to, thank you. And one other question, very happy to have Parent Square, I think it's a very effective and rapid means of communication for parents. Will that be incorporated into any, like, active shooter drills as a mass means of communication, should there be bomb threats or other major incidents that affect our schools?
Thank you for that question. Yes, we will use Parent Square for all urgent alerts, as well as the, the regular newsletters and day-to-day communication from teachers and administrators, so it'll be used for safety, for snow day calls, for all of those alerts.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any other public input? Hearing none, I will seek a motion for us to adjourn.
Motion due at.
Move by Guy Pike, is there a second? Seconded by Dr. Beth. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Kathy, if you could call the roll, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. We're adjourned. Thank you.